Three, two, and one.
Welcome to the city council meeting of September fifteen, twenty twenty-two. City Clerk, we have a preamble, please.
This meeting is compliant with the Ralph M. Brown Act as amended by California Assembly Bill Number three six one, effective September sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, providing for a public health emergency exception to the standard teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. The purpose of this is to provide a safe environment for the public, staff, and council members while allowing for public participation. The public may address the council using exclusively remote public comment options. The council may take action on any item listed in the agenda. Members of the public may view the city council meeting by logging into the Zoom webinar. City council meetings can also be viewed live and or on demand via the city's YouTube channel, youtube.com/brisbaneca, or on Comcast Channel twenty-seven. Archive videos could be replayed on the city's website, brisbaneca.org/meetings. The city council meeting will be an exclusively virtual meeting. The agenda materials may be viewed online at brisbaneca.org at least twenty-four hours prior to a special meeting and at least seventy-two hours prior to a regular meeting. Meeting participants are encouraged to submit public comments in writing in advance of the meeting. Aside from commenting while in the Zoom webinar, the following email and text line will also be monitored during the meeting and public comments received will be noted for the record during oral communications one and two or during an item. Email ipadia@brisbaneca.org, text six two eight two one nine two nine two two. Join the Zoom webinar with the ID number nine nine one nine three six two eight six 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 and the passcode one, two, three, four, five, six, and the caller number one, six, six, nine, nine, zero, zero, nine, one, two, eight. If you need special assistance to participate in this meeting, please contact the city clerk at four one five five oh eight two one one three. Notification in advance of the meeting will enable the city to make reasonable arrangements to ensure accessibility to this meeting.
Thank you, City Clerk, calling the meeting to order at seven thirty-nine PM. I appreciate the public's patience with us. We have some logistical considerations tonight that will become evident as we go on. And so we're just running a tad late. Uh, city, um, first of all, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you join me, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City Clerk, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cunningham?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Lent?
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Here.
And Mayor Mackin?
Here, thank you. Uh, we move on to a report out of our closed session. City Attorney, can we have a report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the council met in closed session to discuss pending litigation. Uh, I should report out that the city took, um, filed a lawsuit this, uh, this afternoon against California High School Law Authority, alleging that the authority violated CEQA. Uh, the city manager will have a little more to say about that later in the meeting. Um, in addition, the, uh, council, uh, discussed another matter, uh, with pending litigation regarding, uh, the states, uh, the, uh, I always want to call just the sales tax, but I'm sorry, sales and use tax of the city, and, uh, I was getting direction. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. We move on to adoption of the agenda. Can I get a first and second to adopt the agenda as it stands, please?
So moved. Second, then.
Okay, first, O'Connell, second by Cunningham. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Mackin?
Aye. Next, we move to awards and presentations, and we have some very, very special guests tonight. Tonight, we have members of the Brisbane Pirates who are here. They won the twenty twenty-two South San Francisco Pony Baseball Championships. Doesn't get any better than this. Way to go, guys. My goodness.
Woo-hoo! Yay!
I understand we have some shiny new championship trophies. Did you bring your trophies? Can we see them? Can you hold them high? Look at that. All right. Congratulations, Pirates. You showed that Brisbane has not just talent, but immense talent. I just wondered if we could see the pirate spirit that won that championship. Can we have a cheer from you? There we go. They're masked, but I can hear it all the way from here. And now it's time to take our hats off to the players and all your supporters, your assistant coaches, Brian Young, Calvin Lee, John Veray, and Parks and Recreation Coordinator Ricardo Monroy, and your best fans, your family and your friends. I will now read a commendation prepared for your head coach, Jason Lopano. On behalf of the city of Brisbane, on this date, September fifteen, twenty twenty-two, I would like to recognize Jason Lopano, head coach of the Brisbane Pirates, for the time and dedication you gave to the Brisbane Pirates. Congratulations on winning the twenty twenty-two South San Francisco Pony Baseball Champions. You make Brisbane proud. Here, we have some volume now. Way to go. Parks and Recreation Coordinator Ricardo Monroy, would you now present Coach Lopano his commendation, please?
It is.
Very good. And Coach, did, did you have a couple of words you'd like to say? Would you like to introduce your team to us?
Uh, yes, good evening. These are the Brisbane Pirates.
Yeah!
My name is, uh, Coach Jason Lopano, and I am absolutely honored to represent the community of Brisbane. Uh, the families are strong. The kids led with their hearts, their brains. And we became champions, and I think this is one thing, no matter how old they get, will stay with them. So I thank Brisbane for letting me part of it. Thank you for, um, recognizing me, but truthfully, it's about these young men stepping up. So I actually feel very honored. So, uh, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. I'm just getting chills. This is a very exciting moment, guys, and if the Giants don't win this year, at least Brisbane has won the championship because of you. You owe us nothing. We owe you a great debt of gratitude because you are champions this year. Thank you so much. And just a note, they'll be signing autographs at City Hall if you're interested.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you, coaches, and thank you, team.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Good job.
Put your hand.
Seriously? All right, moving right along.
Guys, we'll step outside.
Makes it all worth it, right?
Does make it all worth it. We make us so proud of them. This is National Preparedness Month. I'm going to read a proclamation. Can we get the mic off in the community? There we go. Okay. Whereas each September, we observe National Preparedness Month to raise awareness about the importance of preparing for disasters. This year, preparedness takes on new significance as we witness unprecedented events of immense severity due to our changing climate. Whereas California has borne the tragic impacts of earthquakes, destructive wildfires, and devastating winter storms, the Federal Emergency Management Agency reminds us that disasters can happen at any time. Whereas preparedness can make the difference between life and death. Our North County Fire Authority, City Emergency Services, and other service organizations will be providing information this month to help you prepare for emergency situations. Whereas the COVID-nineteen pandemic still remains a threat, this month is a good time to remind residents about getting current vaccinations to protect your loved ones. Whereas when individuals take responsibility for preparing their families and their community, the chance of survival and return to normalcy following a disaster is greatly increased. Therefore, as Mayor of the City of Brisbane, I do hereby proclaim September twenty twenty-two as National Preparedness Month. This year's theme, A Lasting Legacy, is a reminder that the life you've built is worth protecting. Tonight, we have Assistant Fire Marshal of the North County Fire Authority, Craig Whitner, here to accept the proclamation. Craig, we so rely on all of you first responders. Is there any words that you'd like to say to us? You see firsthand the effects of people not being prepared. What would you like to say to our public tonight?
Thank you, Honorable Madam Mayor and Honorable, uh, City Council. Uh, the North County Fire Authority would like to thank you for recognizing National Preparedness Month. Emergency preparedness is not done, uh, just one month a year, but should be considered all year round. National Preparedness Month creates an opportunity for citizens to prepare their homes, their businesses, and their communities, uh, for disasters such as fire, earthquakes, floods, and any other natural disaster. Planning and preparedness starts before the disaster. The North County Fire Authority urges all citizens to plan ahead and prepare themselves, their families, and their friends for any, any disaster or emergency so that they can increase their chances for survival and a positive outcome. Go to our website, northcountyfire.org, and click on various preparedness and fire safety tips. We're, we're ready and here to serve. Thank you very much, ma'am.
No, thank you. You know, um, we rely on you so much. You don't get enough appreciation. So it, it, it's, it's our, our first line of protection, and things could be so much worse. The fact that we have you always looking out for us, and that big mountain up there is always something we watch in windstorms and any kind of winter storms with lightning. Um, thank you so much for all that you do.
It's our pleasure.
Putting your lives on the line all the time. I want to mention that as well.
It's our pleasure. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Moving on to our consent calendar, uh, can I get a first and second to approve consent calendar items C through H, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, we have first by Davis, second by O'Connell. On a roll call, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Mackin?
Aye. Thank you. Next, we have a continued public hearing. This is an applicant appeal of the Planning Commission's April four, twenty twenty-two decision denying modification of interim use permit twenty twenty-one dash U P dash three to allow the use of a vacant site on the Baylands to be used for a Google Bus staging yard. The council and, uh, staff received correspondence from the applicant regarding this appeal. Uh, can we have a staff report, please?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Um, as the correspondence you received today indicated, Google has elected to withdraw the request for appeal and extension of the use permit. The request, uh, by Google is to allow, the city council to allow them ninety days to wind down their operations and vacate the site. Um, so that's the, uh, request before Google, uh, that Google's made to you this evening. Uh, I think we dispense with the staff report because the, the item, you know, as was originally presented is moot. So with that, I'll turn it back to the council.
Okay, do we have council questions, starting, uh, Councilmember O'Connell? Questions?
Yes, um, with this wind down, um, John, does that mean that they will, you know, remove their lights and the, um, fencing and the other materials on the site, or is that beyond our control?
At the end of the ninety-day period, if the council grants that, the site would be left in a vacant state. So the lights would be gone. Um, I, you might want to ask the property owner. I don't know what kind of fencing, if they would. I would, I don't know if they'd be removing fencing or what fencing they've installed, but I would defer to the, uh, property owner about that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Cunningham?
They may. I'm sorry to interrupt. Uh, Councilmember O'Connell, they may have a, uh, responsibility to return it as they found it, which would also take care of the fencing, but it's not clear, uh, as John said. I just wanted to be clear what the standard.
Thank you, City Attorney. Councilmember Cunningham?
No questions.
Okay. Councilmember Davis?
No questions.
Councilmember Lent?
All right, yeah, so, um, so, John, we did receive the letter from Google. Um, did, you know, from what they said, I mean, there wasn't any explanation why. Um, I, I know that the, I, I believe the applicant is in, um, in the meeting. So, um, I, I'm just curious to know why they decided not to stay.
Okay, I think we'll probably get to that then, Clerk, but did you have a question for staff?
Uh, well, that was the question. Staff knew why.
I would defer to the applicant.
Oh, okay. Okay, so the applicant, um, i- is prepared to, to, to give, uh, comment?
It, it's a voluntary. They've, they've withdrawn. The applicant wishes to say something that I'm more than welcome to, but the matter's deemed closed, so Eric, I leave it up to you entirely.
Yeah.
Yes, um, hello, everyone. Um, so I'm, I'm not here to speak on behalf of Google, so I can't really say their reason. I know it was a, a decision made beyond just the transportation team's control, so that's, that's what I know, um, as far as that goes, so.
Okay, and, and so, Eric, I appreciate you wanting to, to talk with us. Um, right, you know, there's, there's no project now. Uh, but, you know, in the, in the back and forth that we've had regarding this particular application, you know, you had, um, provided a willingness to, to improve the safety of, of, of tunnel road and, uh, make it safer for cyclists. Um, we talked about removing the, 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 the cement blocks and so, um, granted, that, that, those were all part of moving forward with, with Google, you know, staying in the, in, in the location. Um, so, yeah, I'm just gonna put that out there. I mean, how, how, how do you feel about continuing to, to, to honor that?
Yeah, so I, I expected that question, um,
Sure.
And, uh, yeah, I, I don't, it, you know, I was trying to anticipate it, but it, it is still somewhat new information to us uh, as far as this decision is concerned. You know, the, the priority of our company is, is, you know, redevelopment of the site. Um, you know, and, and I think that has always been our goal. You know, the, the leasing business, you know, the revenue we're able to generate, you know, is, is what, what we sort of depend on for, for projects like what I think we were proposing, but we, you know, we, we know we were preparing ourselves to make that commitment, so I, I would need to just kind of put a plan together and talk it over with our team to see kind of where, where people stand.
Okay, no, I know. I appreciate that, uh, and, and I get that. Um, okay, so it sounds like there, there's at least a willingness to, to, uh, perhaps continue the discussions with, with city staff and, and maybe find out, you know, what might be feasible.
Yes, definitely.
Okay. All right, thank you, Eric. I appreciate it.
Okay, so I have a question either for city staff or also Mr. Aronson. Why ninety days? What takes ninety days when we have buses and light standards? I don't know. I, I don't quite understand why ninety days.
Yeah, the, the primary reason I asked the question too, uh, the primary reason is the shift schedule. Uh, they would need to sort of set people up differently since they are, they're lot down in Mountain View, I believe. That's my, what they've done in the past when they've had uh, operational disruptions, so I think that's where they're going, but, um, I think they need time to, to reshuffle their schedules. Also, also to remove the light standards.
Okay, I, I think my concern here is that this started in twenty nineteen. We're in twenty twenty-two. We've had four planning commission meetings, two council meetings, countless staff hours, and this has cost the city of Brisbane a lot of money. Quite frankly, a lot of time and a lot of money. And so with the time that we had in delay between the last council meeting and today was more than adequate time to plan ahead and resolve this, and now we're being asked for ninety days more. And I don't know if ninety days will be it, or whether then there will be re- requests for another thirty, sixty, ninety more days. And I'd like to see some finality here because this is now costing the city of Brisbane money. We do not get revenue from this, and we have really bent over backwards to make this work. And, and Eric, I'm not lecturing you. Please don't take it that way. I'm, I'm very disappointed in Google's actual management or mismanagement of this. So, um, that's, that's my feelings on it. Um, I want to hear from the rest of the council and how they feel about it. Um, that's what I have to say. Anyone else? Councilmember O'Connell?
Um, I, I agree with the points you've made. Um, at this point, their permit expires on what date, John?
I believe it's in November.
Um, November is when the current extension ends?
If, yes, if the, no accident had been taken, yes, it would have been November this year.
And with the ninety days, the date would be?
Um, what, December something? December fourteenth, fifteenth?
Okay. So it's really only adding uh, and, and the date in November, that when it would have expired?
Um, I'd have to double check. I thought it was eighteenth, this comes to mind, but I'm not totally certain of that date.
Can we have a clarification that, that ninety-day extension? Is it ninety days after the permit expires?
No, it's ninety days from the council taking action to accept. It's if you take action to accept their withdrawal tonight, the clock would start tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
So it's really, in theory, only adding approximately thirty days to what we had already granted them. Is that correct?
Correct. Ken, uh, Ken's here. Ken Johnson. Ken, do you know the specific date?
So I, I can pull that up. I, I did the math, uh, yesterday, and it would be sixty-nine days from today when that would be due to expire, wha- whatever that sixty-nine days turns out to be. So it's, um, late November.
So one would assume it's ninety less sixty-nine. So that's an additional twenty-one days
Correct.
that they are asking for at this point.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think it's gonna make much difference. It's really only if they, um, you know, have bad behavior during those last ninety days because we really have no enforcement availability from the original permit. Um, so I don't know if we can add an enforcement clause to the, um, permit ongoing for these next ninety days.
If I may, um, Madam O'Connell, I, I do include in that letter that, you know, we will continue to report and maintain the light standards. The hours that we've committed to in the past will be maintained. So we are, we are preparing as if that enforcement will continue.
But that would be your enforcement role as landlord, not Brisbane's enforcement ability as city, I believe, and I'm asking this of staff and legal.
I defer to the city attorney, but that would be my, um, opinion as well. Whatever condition, the conditions are enforceable, but as, you know, we've had this discussion about the southbound trip stop being an enforceable condition, we wouldn't be, at least, wouldn't be in a position I'm aware of to be able to enforce that southbound prohibition.
Um, I would, uh, the, the extra of what I'm, I assume is twenty-one days is, is my count. Um, I can't imagine Google would agree, uh, to have the city come in as an enforcement agent, uh, and I, I'm not even sure that it would be enforceable, frankly, through the contract that was set up. If we did an entirely new contract, uh, I think we could look at that because we could structure it differently, but, um, we can ask. I think it's highly unlikely they'd agree, and I don't know if, even if they agree, I don't know if we will be able to enforce it without sort of a lag time to get it right.
Okay. There you go.
Hey, anyone else's comments?
If I may, uh, Eric, I assume you guys, I think I just heard this, this is a specific. You're already intending to continue to, to wish for no southbound traps and otherwise stay accountable to the contract, correct?
Um, I, I think I heard you clearly. You asked if we were gonna maintain the conditions of approval. Is that what you were asking? Yes, through, through the extension period, of course.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Davis or Cunningham? Oh, Councilmember Lent, you have your hand up.
Yeah, you know, um, I, I just want to express my, my disappointment with, uh, Google withdrawing from the site. Um, to me, you, you know, having those vehicles taken off the road by those buses does have an impact on, on, uh, climate change. Having the buses drive from Mountain View up north has a, a negative impact. Hopefully, the buses get converted to electric, and that's not an issue anymore, though they do add congestion to the, to the roadways. So, yeah, I, I, I think, uh, you know, pulling out the way that they did, you know, it, it wasn't done in very good faith. And I felt that we were moving in a position to work with them. Um, you know, there's also the, the potential of not, uh, uh, making tunnel roads safer, right? That is something that we had worked through, felt like everyone was on, on board with that. Um, so it's unfortunate. However, you know, I, you know, it's like, okay, this is what you need, the ninety days, whatever. Do your thing, and then we can move on and close this chapter. So I, I, I don't think we need to, to add any other issues. There's already existing conditions of approval. We know that sometimes they, they don't make the turn. Okay, they're only gonna be around for ninety days if they happen to do it, um, on a couple of occasions. So that, that, that's where I stand.
Um, Ingrid, do we have any members of the public here tonight that want to make public comments on this?
Madam Mayor, I have not received any written comments. Um, for those who are in attendance in the Zoom meeting, if you could please use the, uh, raised hand function if you'd like to speak. I don't see any raised hands, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Um, anyone wish to have further discussion, counsel? No? Okay, so we need to decide here. Um,
I make a motion to accept their little letter of, um, withdrawal.
Second.
So I think we need to put a date on it.
Ninety days from today.
Didn't, didn't John say the ninety days is from tomorrow?
I defer to the city attorney, whether it's tonight, today or tomorrow.
As the council meets in the evening. As the council meets in the evening, we'll figure out all our business, so I would say it would be today.
Okay, then today.
Okay, so we got a first from Lance and a second from Davis. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Mackin?
Nay. Okay, moving on. We move to staff reports. The city managers report on upcoming activities. City manager, your report, please.
Okay. Get the screen up. Ingrid, are we able to get the screen? Uh, you're on mute, Ingrid.
One minute, let me just get that on the screen, please.
Okay. There we. Okay, so the first item is the I think that's actually the second item. There we go. First item is the coastal cleanup day is this Saturday at nine thirty AM. You can come to the parking lot nearest to Dock Six of the Brisbane Marina to lend a hand. Second item is the fundraiser for type one diabetes camp taking place at the Eagles, uh, also this Saturday from, uh, twelve to four PM. A fifteen dollar per person dinner. It's a fundraiser for, uh, type one youth diabetes. Reminder that the day in the park is happening on Saturday, October first. Uh, still some spaces available for the Derby. Um, and, um, you can go on to our website, I think, BrisbaneCA.org slash dip slash Derby. The candidates forum will be on, uh, September twenty-ninth at, uh, seven PM. Um, I believe that's in the council chambers. Is that correct, Ingrid?
That's, that's correct.
Correct. Okay, and you can, uh, submit questions on the day, uh, of the, um, event, um, in person, if you're, if you're coming in person. And then should have one more item.
Um, I believe that was all of those slides.
Oh, there, I think, okay, well, we are, um, as the city attorney indicated earlier, uh, today, the, uh, the city did file a lawsuit uh, against California High Speed Rail. Um, that lawsuit, uh, information will be on our website, uh, tomorrow. Um, and we will have it in our, um, blast. Um, this, um, came after, uh, considerable deliberation by the city council. Um, it was, um, not something that anybody, um, had wished that we would get to. Um, but, um, we were, uh, basically driven to this point by ten years of inactivity and ten years of, um, the High Speed Rail Authority not responding to, uh, a number of, um, requests that the city had, uh, made. Uh, the city, uh, has bills that we have a very strong case that high speed rail has violated California law, uh, uh, California Environmental Quality Act, uh, law. And that, um, now, uh, we are looking to the court system to help, um, uh, get some resolution to the issues that we have brought forward. That's my report tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to mayor council matters, we have creation of the ordinance five twenty-eight review ad hoc subcommittee and selection of members. This ordinance will be allowed for research and development R and D uses at Sierra Point. Could we have staff report, please?
Um, earlier this year, uh, there was an, uh, item that was before the city council for, um, a permit out at, uh, Sierra Point. Um, there was a fair amount of discussion. The, uh, applicant ultimately withdrew. Um, and it was the first act, uh, application that we have had under our ordinance, which I believe is about twelve years, twelve, thirteen years old. Um, in talking this with this with the mayor and, uh, some other council members, the thought was that maybe we should put together a council ad hoc committee to, um, examine the, uh, ordinance that was adopted, I believe in two thousand eight. Um, and see, uh, what changes, uh, might be warranted, um, since it's 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 about fifteen years old now.
All right, and, uh, there is no vote. This is informational. Is that correct?
Um, well, I think the expectation was, um, that you would, uh, if there's an interest in doing this, that, uh, two members would be appointed tonight.
I would like to be on that committee.
So would I.
I I think it's a really important, um, ordinance to review in light of changing uh, uses that have happened out at Sierra Point, and so I think it's good for us to, um, review it and get our ducks in order and and if, uh, council members Cunningham and Mayor Mackin want to be on that subcommittee, then or ad hoc committee, that's right.
Okay, uh, also for the rec heard, we did receive, uh, correspondence from Dana Dilworth regarding this item. All right, then if no further discussion or objections to that, um, councilmember Cunningham and I will serve on that ad hoc subcommittee. Next item we have are the countywide assignments and subcom committee reports, and we haven't done that for a while. So how about we start, uh, councilmember Lance, you want to start?
Yeah, you know, um, yeah, it has been a while, so I'm not sure if there was a subcommittee that, uh, I was on, then you know, I apologize if I miss it, though, um, maybe there's a list that, uh, we can bring up and then I could talk about it. Uh, but
Economic Development, Cliff?
That's right, we did have Economic Development. Okay, that's right. No, no, we did. We did talk about a variety of, uh, of items. Um, I don't know, you want to talk about that, Karen?
No, I think you should.
Okay, uh, all right. So, um, so let's see. So we did talk about, uh, the, um, uh, the, 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 the folks that that, um, want to set up the EV stations.
Ample.
Ample, exactly. And, um, yeah, no, it was really cool to to, uh, understand their their business model. Um, you know, they're looking to to help folks that at least this, this is their mission, right? Not exactly what they'd be doing in the beginning. But, you know, they they they're trying to promote, y- you know, greater use of electric vehicles. Of course, there's a lot of folks that that don't own, uh, a home, right? Don't have access to be able to to charge from their residence. And so what they do is, um, they swap out the batteries that are in the cars. And so it's kind of like, you know, you you like going to a gas station instead of fueling up with, uh, gas. They swap out your battery and they put in a new one. What they would like to do is set up a location, uh, at the B of A site and then one out at the Marina, but their main clientele at this point would be, um, you know, folks like Uber and Lyft, you know, more of a fleet type of, uh, uh, electric car operation. So, um, yeah, I thought it was interesting. Um, and I'm not exactly sure where they are in the process of applying for a permit or reaching out to, um, yeah, you know, to, you know, for the whole council to to discuss, but that was something that they wanted to pitch to, uh, the economic, uh, subcommittee. So is there anything else that I I missed there, Karen?
Um, it it's a fleet vehicle situation to begin with, um, only because of the size and the shape of the batteries for each vehicle is slightly different, and their request was to, for us to bring to council the two locations, one at Bank of America site and one out at Sierra Point. The site they chose for the Bank of America site, I don't like, and I think it's possible for it to be there, but in a different position. It's way too in your face where they've got it, but they don't really care where it is, I don't think. So I I think, John, are you there? Um, what their next steps are, I'm not sure. We were to bring it to council, and and I was making a recommendation that I did like the idea of them having these two sites. Um, but I don't know what happens after that. Did John go?
I think he's gone.
Okay, Clay?
Yeah, we we will be bringing it back to council. I think the, uh, subcommittee had recommended both, um, sites, and, um, we will, um, have that as a, an agreement, uh, um, that would be on a future city council meeting. Um, I I I appreciate your comments, Karen, and and perhaps we may want to get together one more time as a subcommittee. Um, if there's concerns with the, um, location on the B of A site that they had identified, if if we want to direct it to some other, uh, location on the B of A site, then, um, maybe we'll do that before we get to the full council.
Okay, the the other thing that was actually really interesting about this was, um, it's very interesting to me that the types of businesses that are attracted to Brisbane. It's it's like all of these really forward-thinking places, you know, like the carbon sequestration, battery storage, et cetera. And and this little gadget, for want of a better word, it's it's kind of like a shed, but a a very cool Jetsons-looking shed. Um, there's a robot that changes the battery. So you cut it back in, and this little robot, don't think R two D two, it doesn't look like that. Um, basically goes in, pulls out the battery, puts it in to be recharged, and puts a fresh battery in. So we are really attracting all of these very forward-thinking companies that, you know, sustainability, et cetera, et cetera. So, anyway.
And then, um, uh, we had a commute.org, uh, meeting this morning. And, um, you know, one of the things that we discussed was the, it was C CAG's, um, TDM ordinance. And it's been in place, I I think, I think nine months now. Give or take a month. And, uh, NOCITY has, um, uh, required, uh, any new development to abide by the new TDM standards. So, um, and so then it just, you know, of course, made me think, okay, where where are we in the process of of our, uh, TDM plan process? And so, John, or Clay, I was hoping maybe you could kind of shine a little light on that, and I apologize for kind of putting you on the spot, because I I probably should have reached out to you earlier, but yeah, if you if you wouldn't mind giving us an update on on that.
Yeah, I I know, um, Randy and I talked about this not too long ago. Um, so we do have a consultant that's, um, you know, working with us on that, and we will have a, uh, a draft to bring to the, um, I think there's an ad hoc subcommittee. You're on. Um, then we will be bringing it to the ad hoc subcommittee, um, I think probably within the next couple of months.
Okay, great. All right, you know, that that'd be good. Um, so thank you for that. Um, yeah, that that's it, uh, Colleen.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember O'Connell?
I just raised my hand because, uh, Cliff was speaking in acronyms that other people may not understand what they're, he's talking about.
Transit demand management.
So it's transit demand management. Okay. Um, so that was why I was raising my hand, and then on the, um, I had some questions, but I understand it's really not the place to ask questions about putting something on the Bank of America site at this time. So I will hold those questions till it comes before the council. Um, because I do have some concerns about putting something there of that nature. Um, so, thank you. That, I don't believe I have any reports out, um, as far as subcommittees, although I know I've done some. So I guess I would need to go back to my computer and look.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councilmember Davis?
Karen and I met with, uh, Park and Recreation, um, liaisons, and we just accepted essentially a progress report of what they've been up to. And we determined the volunteer of the year, which is under lock and key until day in the park. So, um, the majority of the meeting was discussing that.
Okay.
That's all I
All right, councilmember Cunningham?
Um, the only other thing I have was, uh, I am on the Legislative Committee for C CAG. And, um, today they had a special meeting relative to, um, SB nine. Um, I did send, um, Clay and you, Colleen, um, information on that, which can be shared with the entire council. It's very interesting, um, relative to, um, SB nine is going to make available commercial development, um, residential development in commercial, in in commercial areas without changing the city's zoning, which is very interesting. So there was a whole bunch of stuff, and and, um, Matt, who is our attorney at C CAG, he sent me a link, which I've shared with Clay to share with the entire council, that goes into great detail about that. The only caveat is really that fifty percent of the development under twenty acres must be residential. Um, the the flaws in that that everybody could see quite glaringly was that there was, um, no low, very low income housing even mentioned in that bill, so. So that was, that was that. That was kind of stunning, shocking, and everything else rolled into one. But you'll all get a report out on that, because I sent it off to you guys about five thirty.
Thank you for that, because that's a little surprising. I thought one of the reasons behind that was to encourage the low, very low income development because of, um, COVID, post-COVID, empty office buildings, shopping malls, warehouses, and so on. So to learn that it's not really addressing the lower-income strata is
I'm I'm not sure if it's not, um, addressing it because they want to leave it up to each individual city. Or there's a flaw in, i- it's going before the govern- the governor in the next few days. So we didn't even have time to take a position on it. We just had to discuss it for five minutes and leave to go to other meetings. But I I was told by Matt Robinson that it is going for the governor in the next few days, and that they feel very strongly that he's going to sign it as is.
Maybe our city attorney can weigh in. Tom, do you know?
Know any more about it?
The bill, uh, is SB six, uh, SB nine was the
By that, sorry.
Um, I'm generally familiar with it. I'm a little surprised by the reading I'm hearing, so what I will, if I may, is what I will, is, uh, look at it offline, and and John and I can give you a page on it later. Um, it's, well, yes, it does allow for housing in commercial zones, uh, where the city has not proactively, um, acted. I read it is more, uh, limited than it sounds like, um, the other council did, so I'd like to check that before I say for sure.
Okay, sorry to put you on the spot with that.
I'll send you that link too, Tom.
Thanks. Karen, is it to an analysis or or the, I have the bill on the
It's a, it's a le- it's from the legal firm.
Oh, thank you.
Karen, did you have any other reports?
I don't remember. I don't think so.
Okay, you had one with me, but it'll, it'll come back to you.
Want to report out on going to the league thing?
Oh, yes. Okay, so I do, actually. The 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 best part of the League of California Cities for me, and I have multiple complaints that we'll get back to them, uh, but the the best part of that was that I was sitting waiting to do something on Friday morning, and I ended up in a conversation which was the best part of the three days there with three mayors from central California and tiny little cities of fifteen thousand people, and I'm like, tiny little cities, huh? But these are farming communities to the east of Fresno, think Colinger. But these are farming communities to the east of Fresno, think Colinger and and then go east. And they were um very aggressive in their water recycling reuse sustainability um situation. It was a fascinating conversation. Um, I did reach out to them today. They're going to be talking to um Madam Mayor and um and Clay about what they're doing. They they're even reusing wait for it blackwater. So they have come a long way, baby, trying to extract every bit of usable water that they can. Um, their biggest, the biggest thing for them is making sure that their trees don't die. The trees that are around the houses and keeping things cool. But it was a very, very interesting discussion. The sequoia, um, the sequoia session was interesting. A lot of it was very redundant, seen it many, many times before. I I took some very loose notes that I've said to Clay and we can have a conversation about that at some point and you know, if anything's of interest, disseminate it to everybody, but um, I did have some complaints about how they ran the show. Getting a twenty-four-page legal document to me on a Thursday night for a vote on Thursday, Friday morning, when everyone had to check out of their hotels at eleven o'clock was pretty inappropriate. So I didn't get to vote, even that's one of the reasons I was there. So there you go.
All right, thank you. Um, we had a planning issues subcommittee. Now Karen will go, that's right. That was just the other day, but but there's been a lot happening. We went over the housing element with our planning staff. And I want to take this opportunity to thank both the planning staff and the planning commission. This will be coming back to the council, but we did a thorough thorough review. Attention to detail was phenomenal, explanations for what the thought was behind it. Um, I I just, it was really, really well done and and I appreciate that because this housing element right now is very, very important to Brisbane. And um, that's that's maybe all I'm going to say. Karen, did you want to add to that?
No, I I thought Stuff did an amazing job and I think it's ready to come back to council as is and and then have council discuss whatever they think is appropriate.
Yeah, it it that's some really innovative new ideas in there too that we've not seen before. And and that was, I would call delightful, things that they thought of. Um, so I I'm gonna, I'm not going to spoil it. We'll we'll leave it for when it comes to the council. Um, I had a PCE meeting, Peninsula Clean Energy, for those who hate acronyms. That was in August. Rather than going through lots of detail on on what contracts are being signed, uh, it seems like every Peninsula Clean Energy meeting now, there's um contracts to be approved that are for solar or solar battery. Again, a lot of them are Central Valley, Bakersfield, farmland that's being allowed of to go fellow. So the energy developers are eagerly snapping up those irrigated properties for solar. The new glitch in the mix has been supply chain issues. So there was one contract that uh PCE already had for solar and it was supposed to have added back battery, and then that was removed at the last minute simply because they can't get the supplies. So the other, I think I've mentioned before, element in all of this is that California has been way ahead in terms of sourcing renewable energy, but we are competing now with lots of other states for the same facilities because Peninsula Clean Energy doesn't own these facilities. We make contracts to buy the power. And oftentimes, it's not one person contracting with them. It might be divided amongst four different power company. Buying portions of that power. But now there is deep competition because we are not the only ones. It's it's going to the Midwest and the Western states. Everybody is scrambling to get power. And um, just just looking at the conversion of gas appliances and heaters to electric and electric vehicles that are going to need to charge at night and trying to keep the grid running, renewable sources are in just almost insane demand. The good thing I will tell you is that there's a lot of venture capital out there that's being poured into this. So I'll leave you on that optimistic note. And it's still moving ahead mightily. Um, City Clerk, did we get any other written communications?
And the mayor, we received correspondences not only from Eric Aronson and Dana Dilworth. We also received an email from Susan Kirch, Kirsch, around about the Catalyst Town Hall.
Okay, thank you. And do we have any members of the public wishing to speak under our oral communications too?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Okay, that being said, I'm going to tell you our next council meeting is October the sixth. I believe, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right.
And Colleen, we're going to talk about the
Oh, yeah. Okay, Cliff, why don't you go ahead and do the intro?
Yeah, thank you. So um, yeah, so uh first of all, it was great working with you, Colleen, trying to come up with the right argument language for not only our position, but then the rebuttals to um, you know, the as I guys, Mr. Hinkle, so you know, comments. But uh, you know, we also talked about um, is what we've done for the you know, the packet that people get in the mail, uh, good enough, right? When when Measure J was before the voters, there was a literature that went out, signs. Uh, there was a campaign for um taxing uh liquid uh fuel, storage. So um, we thought it would be important for us to talk about it as a council. It should, should we form a committee uh to to promote the passage of our measures, uh especially since the one is extremely important um to the overall uh financial well-being of 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 our budget. So just, you know, trying to get some feedback from all of you.
Um, I think I have slightly different take on things. Um, well, I was one of the proponents of the sales tax ballot measure. I also have a great deal of respect for everyone who's going through economic hardship right now. And I just want to to state very clearly that while we really need the sales tax money, if the public does not vote for this measure, we will go on. We will manage to tighten everything up. Changes will have to be made. City business will go on. If we want to proceed the way Brisbane has been operating, then and we need that sales tax money. So you, as voters, are going to have to decide. We'll live with whichever way you go. But I think it was really important to get this on the ballot for this fall because it's a situation where you need to make that decision. You're going to have to with it, and we will take whatever directive you give us. So that being said, I remember Measure JJ and the materials that went out. Um, I do remember there was a a bit of a backlash where I heard residents saying, oh, the city is pushing this and and they're using city money to do that. And and there was nothing illegal about what was done. So I I'm just presenting the upside and the possible downside. So I think we need to hear from the rest of the council how they want to go on this. Councilmember O'Connell? Reactions?
Um, you know, I'm not sure what our legal ability to set spend any funds are on a ballot measure, and I would like to hear from our legal team about that.
Yes, Councilmember O'Connell, the uh, the city can spend money essentially re- there's the standards will ask here, there are two ways of phrasing it, but just think in terms of reasonable amounts of money to educate the public. It cannot be putting your thumb on the scale one way or the other about a ballot measure. Um, even a ballot measure that you put on the ballot. In the ballot pamphlet, there will be a pro and a con argument. The pro may be authored by a city official because that's who's putting it on the ballot. The opposition can be authored by a city official if they didn't want it on the ballot. So that should not be confused. And I believe that was part of the confusion on Measure JJ sometime ago, at least with the want of the people who raised questions. Um, that ballot pamphlet is not being produced at the city's cost. It's providing arguments for and against to the the county to put into the ballot pamphlet. Um, but in terms of actually outreach to the city, as long as it's educational and it's city money, you're okay.
So Tom, I just want to just like clarify um about the Measure JJ campaign. Um, that was, that was a campaign of citizens. The citizens raised the money. The citizens paid for the campaign material. The city didn't provide any any funding. So that, yeah, so I mean, it, yeah, so this is basically that, you know, we as a council, would we want to create a campaign committee to then make that material that perhaps would go on someone's door? Uh, or in the mail, or, you know, some signs around town. That that that's that's basically that. It's not not that how the city do anything.
So I I'm, uh, one, I think on JJ, I I second what uh your comments are. Councilmember Lance, the, I recall that because a complaint was sent to the FPPC and they fairly summarily dismissed it once they knew the facts. That somebody just misunderstood and thought
Yes.
actively involved in spending money for JJ. Um, maybe I misunderstood what was being said for this evening, and I apologize if I did uh for this item. I I understood the question to be if the city's good, if city council members, others uh who work for the city outside of their city work want to come together as a committee and do door hangers or things like that without using same money, that's permissible with very few exceptions that I I'm not going to bother with. It's not relevant here. Um, I understood the question to be, could this weigh in with more information? And if so, what are the limits to that? And that's what I was answering. So I apologize.
Okay.
So what I'm, what I'm think, you know, we as a city, we can't say vote yes on this blanketly and have signs out. We can't do that if and and I'm not even sure that we could discuss forming a committee among ourselves on this meeting. Because that is using city time and resources. Um, if we were to do a pro or against this ballot measure in this forum.
I agree. Uh, yes, you cannot use city resources to go pro or con. Absolutely right. I understood the reference to the committee simply to be a clarification of the question and answer, so I didn't take that as improper. Um, and I think I created the complication. I misunderstood your original question. Uh, I think you're looking for a threshold, not a direct. But no, you cannot use city resources to do anything other than educate. If you're going to educate as a city, I would strongly recommend the council that this the city attorney look at that because it's as we all know, language uh can be misinterpreted rather easily. As far as any other activity, any other activity of anybody at the city, as long as it's not city resources, you do what you can do uh in any election, just come together around a cause. I think we'd try our best leaving it with that the council's comfortable.
Councilmember Davis?
I mean, I don't really want to touch this with a ten-foot pole, to be honest.
Okay, so uh uh Councilmember Lance, it sounds like if there's any kind of um initiative you want to make, it needs to be done outside of the council meeting, is what I'm taking from the city attorney.
Yeah, I'll tell you, uh, Councilmember Lance, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought you were just drawing the distinction between the two. If somebody's going to get involved in the campaign outside of the not using city resources, city personnel can do that. They can't use city resources. Um, in city personnel writ large, including elective officials. Um, that's, you're right, Councilmember Lance, that's how I took it and with the
Yes, that that's exactly, yeah, how how I stated it. So, but yeah, okay. No, that's fine. Thank you for clarifying.
All right, I think then we've covered. Anybody else need to weigh in on this? No, going once? Going twice. All right. So our next meeting is in October. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Eight forty two.